Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
We're gonna ask you if you would bow your heads with us. Most holy and everlasting God our Father, we thank you for your many blessings that you have bestowed upon us. We thank you for this day. Continue to bless the city of Orangeburg and give us your grace, your peace, and your mercy. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
We are certainly happy to have all of you to join with us here in person, and also those who are watching us virtually. We are certainly happy to have you with us tonight. Our city council agenda, item number one is consideration of February 20th, 2024 city council minutes.
Move for passage.
Second. Motion has been made by Councilman Strowman, second by Councilman Kalu. All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it, the motion is carried. Recognition of March community or character trait is optimistic, is having a positive outlook or attitude believing that good things will happen in the future. And we're gonna ask all the citizens in Orangeburg County to please try to govern yourself to this community character trait and exemplify that as you go along. We have our first appearance tonight is with Ms. Diane Colvin, Associate Business Director, Director of Business Development and Communication, Clemson Rural Health Clinic, Orangeburg Update. And we're gonna ask Ms. Colvin if she would come forward. Thank you.
Hey there, I'm Diana Colvin. I work for Clemson Rural Health with Clemson University. I have with me Ms. Yolanda Green. She's our nurse practitioner at the clinic. And we just have a few slides that we want to share with you in recognition of our one-year anniversary as the Clemson Health Clinic at Orangeburg and March as National Nutrition Month. Next slide. So the reason why we came, the reason why Clemson Rural Health was even started is we recognize that there are disparities in our community. We have two maps that we have put on the screen. The first one on the left shows the red counties and the blue counties. Those red counties represent the lowest life expectancy in our state. The blue counties represent the highest. In some zip codes, there's a 20-year life expectancy difference just by zip code. So if you live somewhere in Richland County versus somewhere on the I-95 corridor, you can see a 20-year difference in your life expectancy. The one on the right, you can see death rates due to diabetes. Those darkest blue counties are gonna have the highest death rate from diabetes and complications from diabetes. So twice as many people die from diabetes from those lightest colors to the darkest colors. So we see that this is an issue in Clemson with our land grant mission. Feels empowered by the state to do what we can and do our part to work with the rural counties and help improve their, transform their health outcomes. Next slide. So we do this by trying to reduce premature deaths, reduce preventable hospitalizations, and improve overall quality of life. Next slide. We do this by setting up hub clinics, which we have here in Orangeburg at the Clemson Health Clinic at Orangeburg. That includes a fleet of mobile health units, a multidisciplinary team, remote patient monitoring, a primary care clinic, a common electronic medical record, and a produce prescription program. Next slide. Right now, we currently have five locations. One of those is gonna be open and operational in Lancaster by the end of the year. So we have Oconee, Pickens, Abbeville, and Orangeburg. And like I said, today we're celebrating one year being here in Orangeburg. Next slide. So we do this through a few strategies. We really wanna integrate food and nutrition into everything that we do. We have a registered dietitian on staff who provides cooking classes, one-on-one appointments, nutrition and diabetes education. She provides, connects them with resources to food pantries if they need it. We also conduct research. We wanna make sure that people in this area have access to the highest quality and cutting-edge products on the market in healthcare to improve their outcomes. We wanna invest in our rural health workforce, which we'll talk about in a moment. We wanna build strategic partnerships, which is why we're here. We wanna get the word out about what we're doing and how people can help. We provide evidence-based care and we try to reduce social determinants, social determinant barriers to health through those mobiles going out into the community to reduce transportation and financial barriers to healthcare. And we also wanna engage our patients as partners in their health. Next slide, please. As we are in this area, one of our main focuses is building up the rural health workforce. There are just not enough doctors for the work that needs to be done. As you can see on this slide, there are about twice as many physicians in an urban community than a rural community. And we wanna, we wanna see that, see some parity and equity come to that. Next slide. So what we're doing is we're working with universities locally and across the state, not just with Clemson University, to provide experiences that help them kind of catch the rural health bug, if you will, to give them a reason to go off, get their education, become doctors, physical therapists, physicians assistants, but then come back to their community to serve, serve this population and help transform lives through that. So we've worked with SE State, the University of South Carolina, Lenore Ryan, Winthrop Clemson. We're in talks with Voorhees and Claflin currently. Next slide. Some benefits to our community that we've brought in. We have same-day and next-day sick visits for anyone. You don't have to necessarily be a patient already to come and schedule an appointment. We do that all at the same time. We do healthcare management for people with chronic diseases. We do telehealth appointments, remote patient monitoring. That's what Yolanda specializes in, where she sends Technology Home, teaches them how to use it, and then she can actually track their health outcomes from her office without them having to come back and forth to our office as much. And she really has seen some amazing impact from that. We have our dietitian, health educators, people can set up an appointment. She's one of the only dietitians in the county, and she is available for appointments. We have our mobile primary care, flu shots and immunizations, prescription management, and lab services. So we really are a full-functioning clinic who also have a mission of going out into the community and making sure we're breaking down barriers to health outcomes. Next slide. All right. Y'all can have questions, y'all might not have questions, but that's what we wanted to share with you today.
Thank you for your presentation. Do you have any type of relationship with MUSE Health?
Yes. Would you all want to speak more to that?
Hi there, again, I'm Yolanda Green. I'm a registered nurse with Clemson Rural Health here in Orangeburg. And we are, we do have a relationship with MUSE Orangeburg. We have a program called Manage Together. We're recruiting patients that are seen at MUSE Orangeburg Ampletery Clinics that are prediabetic, have risk for diabetes, or they're currently diagnosed with type 1 and type 2 diabetes. And in our program, we are implementing lifestyle interventions such as our produce prescription boxes, our remote patient monitoring program, registered dietitian services, so that we can try to decrease the effects that diabetes causes in our communities. We want to decrease the risk of them being hospitalized, having those visits to the emergency room. We want to decrease the risk of stroke and, of course, amputations that diabetes causes. So our relationship with MUSE is gonna, is filtering their participants into our Manage Together program. That is a year-long.
So you read it through the ED, not the inpatient. Who's the physician working with you again?
We, our nurse practitioner in Clemson Rural Health is Ms. Darlene Flood.
Darlene Flood?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, ladies. I was at your grand opening. You had a mobile unit there. Now, I don't know if your hours, had your hours changed or weekend hours? Give us your hours, please.
Yeah, our hours are 8:00 to 4:30, Monday through Friday.
Thank you, something, do you have a pharmacy out there?
We do not have a pharmacy, no. Yeah, we can, we have relationships with pharmacists that we can send prescriptions to. So you can come here for your medication management. We can work with your pharmacist and send prescriptions to any pharmacy that you already use. You can also get lab services done. So if you just need your annual screenings, you can come to us. If you have PIBA, if you use the state health insurance, we're actually one of the providers for those free annual screenings. You can come to us for those.
Is there any way you can educate your patients more in order to use you instead of coming to our ED?
Yes, sir.
Because we have a lot of patients coming through ED that are not necessarily supposed to be in ED, but they can do that outside. But we have a lot of patients that's coming, so it's overwhelming for us.
Yes, sir. And one of the great things about our nurse practitioner, she's a certified diabetes educator. So they, throughout this year while they're enrolled in our program, they get extensive education from the certified diabetes educator, from myself, the registered nurse, and from our dietitians. And we have seen great outcomes. I had a patient that started the program in A1C of 13. And currently, she is now a 6.3. So that is impressive. And she subscribed, she opted in to enroll all of our lifestyle interventions. That was the produce boxes, seeing the registered dietitian. She enrolled in the remote patient monitoring program. And throughout that year, she did not have any urgent care or ED visits or hospitalizations. So we're definitely on the right track.
That's great.
So any of you in here, under the sound of our voice, want to, you know, improve your health outcomes and improve your overall quality of life, please don't hesitate to contact us at Clemson Rural Health, Orangeburg.
Thank you.
Just any consideration or perhaps a partnership with Claflin University?
There is some discussion, no finalized plan yet. But there is some discussion in the works.
Yeah, we really wanna get their students into our clinic to get the experiences, so.
We hope so. That's our school.
I kept wondering.
And we have a wonderful nursing program there.
I know, you can't let us use state beach.
No. Any more questions for Ms. Colvin and I'm gonna say Ms. Green?
That's correct.
If not, thank y'all so much.
Thank you so much.
Y'all's been very informative to us. Thank you. At this time, we're gonna have an appearance from Mr. Mark Garrett, Livingston Terrace Neighborhood. We're gonna ask Ms. Garrett and his wife if y'all would like to come up, please. State your name and your address.
Good evening, my name is Mark Garrett. I live at 551 Livingston Terrace, and that's here in Orangeburg in the city, in the city limits.
Okay.
First of all, I thank Mr. Mayor, the council, for having me to come tonight to speak. I appreciate that. I've lived in Orangeburg all of my life. I work at UPS, I've been there for 38 years. And last Tuesday, two weeks ago, February 20th, we had a nightmare at our house. We had a break-in. And I know I'm not the only one that happened to that day in Orangeburg. But it was scary for me and my wife. My wife got home first, and they had come through the back door, and they rammed through our house. And the scary thing for us is that we have video that they came by Saturday afternoon and rode by our house. And so they were watching us. They were watching what we were driving. They were watching the cars in our driveway and when they could come back. So the reason I'm here tonight is that we have noticed, especially in the last year and a half, that we have a lot of traffic coming through Livingston Terrace. They're parking in the cul-de-sacs, they're getting out of their car, and they're walking to the creeks and to the ponds in our neighborhood, and they're fishing. And last summer, we've had the police to come out three separate times because they were parking in the cul-de-sacs and they were smoking marijuana. And, you know, like I said, that was three occasions. And this past week, we've had to call 911 twice because people are coming and just parking. And I just don't, I don't understand why they're doing that. I know it's not against the law to park on a public street, I know that. But, you know, now that we've had the break-in, it's scary for us. So what I'm coming to tonight is to ask if there's any way that the city could put up no parking or no trespass, no trespassing signs in our neighborhood, and we would love to have one of the security cameras. And maybe that would deter people from coming back there and parking their car and leaving their car and walking on, you know, the property and fishing. I love to fish, I understand, but that is private property. And, and, you know, they just don't have any business. I spoke with Chief Austin this week, and he has assured me that they were gonna step up the surveillance, the ride-bys from the police department, and that has already happened, and we appreciate that. We've appreciated everything that he has done. The city administrator's called me, and I appreciate that he called me, and they're gonna do everything that they can. And we appreciate everything that the city does. We love living in the city limits. We do, we, we love it on Livingston Terrace. We love where we live. But now, you know, this one bad episode has put a bad taste in our mouth. And, and we're hoping that if we, you know, get some, some signage in there and maybe a camera. I know I'm asking a lot, and I apologize, but I'm, I'm hoping that that would deter some of the traffic that we're having coming into our neighborhood.
Okay. Now, I want Chief to step up and tell us what he has done. He talked to you, so that might be, so we can hear him, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Abbott. We have been working with the Garretts over the past few days. Corporal Gilmore went out and conducted a crime prevention by environmental design study. We are trying to assess the landscape because coming into the community from either Broaden or Hillsborough, once you're inside the community, there are cul-de-sacs and roundabouts. And so we're trying to take all of that into consideration and how we can utilize not only surveillance cameras, but the cameras that are already in place at many of the residents. In fact, they have a very unique situation in that they have the Ring cams, which has been very helpful as we've gone through this investigation. So we've had discussion about forming a neighborhood watch group. And with the resources that they currently already have, how we can maximize that, that resource in addition to putting up some signage for no parking and just increasing patrols within the community, I do believe we can successfully address the matter.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Garrett, if it pleases the council and people, can you let Chief continue to
Yes, sir.
work with you and put the signage up?
Yes, sir.
And see whether he can get, I don't know, you know, whether they have cameras gonna, but see, can he help you, you know, 'cause he's an expert with this?
Right.
Yeah, so if you can do that, we hope, and if you're not satisfied, come back to us 'cause we want you and your wife to be, feel safe in your home and where you live.
And we're optimistic that it's gonna get, it's, you know.
Oh, yeah, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, it's gonna get done.
That's right.
Yeah. Now, you tell us, which Garrett are you? Are you Bobby's son?
Oh, no, sir. My dad was from Norway, so that's the Garrett family.
Okay.
But I go to, I went to church with Mr. Bobby and Macon Ray. Yeah.
All right. Well, would the council like to say?
Yeah, I'd like to say something. The Garretts are very good people. They're friends of mine, and I represent this district. If there's any way, any way that we can get a camera, I'd appreciate it. And they would appreciate it too. They need a camera. 'Cause I go down there myself and turn around. I don't fish, though. I don't, I don't hang around.
Yeah, we all come down there, check on y'all. We drive through there.
Well, we're looking forward to continuing to work with the Garrettts. Again, I believe we can address this and have.
Please take care of this for me.
Thank y'all so much.
Thank you, Ms. Garrett. You have a good night, and we gonna do our best.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. At this time, we're gonna have Ms. Norma, Mrs. Norma Murdock come, come before us and state her name and address. She and her husband Reverend Murdock, please.
To Mayor Butler, excuse me, my voice is messing up. To Mayor Butler and the city council members, good evening. I'm here to address statements printed in the TND in the Saturday paper, February 24th, 2024 edition, that were made by representatives of Claflin University and Orangeburg City. I'm also here to inquire about the intentions of Claflin University and the city of Orangeburg regarding my property on Golf Avenue. Claflin Department of Public Utilities Chief Melvin Williams showed security cameras footage February 18th about his shooting incident that occurred on Golf Avenue. My question is, what year is he referring to? Because the way it was written in the paper, one would take for granted that the incident happened approximately two weeks ago, February 18th. I would also like to ask, since the shooting incident occurred, what security measures has Claflin put in place? Chief Williams also made the statements that he believed the individuals in the cars were not Claflin students. My question is, how did he come to that conclusion? Dr. Womack stated, excuse me, Dr. Womack stated that one of the property owners resisted the proposal when it was initially made by the university and has not been contacted in several months. That's true, I'm the property owner. Dr. Womack also said the property in question has been vacant 18 months. That is not true. When we had the first meeting about the closing Golf Avenue, I said to him that my daughter lived in the apartment in back on Golf Avenue, so it was not vacant. To prove my statement, I have light, I have light bills and gas bills from the house. The house in the front runs about $50 a month. Her apartment, $200 and some dollars a month. So that shows it was not vacant. And on top of that, Chief Melvin Williams, to prove I'm telling the truth, about four or five days after our initial meeting to close Golf Avenue, and I told you that my daughter lived in the apartment in back, Chief Melvin Williams took it upon himself to come to my house. I don't know, he walked or drove, and come in my backyard, go to my daughter's apartment and knock on her door. When she opened the door, he identified himself and asked a question about the event. Of course, she knew nothing because I'm her mother. What does she know? All she lives, she only lives there. When he left, she called me extremely upset. So I told her, don't worry about it, I'll take care of it, which I did. I called Chief Williams, I said, Chief Williams, I don't know who told you to or where you got the authority to walk in my backyard, go to my daughter's apartment and knock on her door. That's not what you do. I do not appreciate you doing that, do not appreciate you asking her questions. She cannot answer your questions. I am her mother. You have asked me, I can handle the situation. And I prefer that you not come back to my house and bother my daughter on Golf Avenue anymore. Excuse me. It has been stated that I was sent invitations to attend the, to attend the meeting you had. That is not true. I never received a call, a text message, or certified letter inviting me to come to the meeting. I said calls. The reason I said calls is because Dr. Womack had his secretary to call me prior to that meeting, and my husband and I met with him in his office. So he has my phone number. Ms. Liz Kitz-Zimmern also called me. We were dealing with the property with the idea of closing the street off for parking and painting the, painting the, the no parking sign. I went to her office and met with her, so she has my number. And I've also talked to Mayor Butler about prop, not this property, about another property on the phone. So you have my phone number, excuse me, so you have my phone number. Excuse me, so you have my phone number now. After, after the meeting, um, excuse me. Another question I'd like to ask you about is, I understand, according to the paper, Chief Womack said that Golf Avenue goes through Claflin University. I beg to differ. On Golf Avenue, you have the high-rise dormitory that's been there approximately 20 years. You have the commons dormitory that's been there approximately five years. To go down this street, you have the science building, which is new, and the nurses' office. That is not in Claflin, that's not a part of Claflin University. If you wanna go see Claflin University, go to Magnolia Street and go through the guard. The guard will stop you and question you, and you can drive through Claflin. You will see the honors dormitory on the right. You see the financial office in the front, and the art building to the left. Go down, you'll see the Zimmern Chapel there. That's Claflin, that is part of Claflin, Claflin University, not Golf Avenue. My question to the city of Orangeburg is this. How do you suggest that I get my house or my renters if Claflin is permitted to block off Golf Avenue and access to my house? Remember, my home has been on Golf Avenue over 80 years, along with Claflin University, living very harmoniously. A matter of fact, when my house was there and Claflin was there, teachers from Claflin rented rooms in my house right across the street, and I also kept students. And, and all those years, no problems. We live very harmoniously. Now, look what you're trying to do. Thank you very much for your attention.
Okay, Ms. Murdock, Ms. Murdock, hold on.
The neighbors have got.
Hold on a minute, we might have some questions from council.
Oh, tell me, the neighborhood being together. Oh, I have another thing. My husband reminded me that, you know, most black universities are built in the hood, as you would call the neighborhood. Clark, Morehouse, I'm sorry, Clark Spelman are in the hood. Howard University is in the hood. So most black universities are in the hood. That's where we live. You want your children to come, they come to the university. They couldn't go across town, but you always go through the hood. The neighborhood living in your, in your, to go to school. Any questions anyone have to ask?
Somebody might have a question, but we're gonna have to answer. Now, we are looking at the safety of these kids, and that is very important to us.
Answer my first question.
Because I don't want no kid, including your daughter or your grandchildren, to get shot out there.
Exactly right.
So when we saw the film, it showed where those boys opened fire, and they just started shooting. Those bullets could have hit, it could have hit anybody. And with the days' time, with these young people not listening, and they're hard-headed, they're disobedient, and they don't, they don't care who they're killing. They got permission to carry guns. It's our job to, to make sure that we protect these children 'cause their parents are sending them here from all over the world. That's our job. I came here from Atlanta, Georgia. I stayed right there on Golf Avenue in that same high-rise, 40-something years ago. And we were protecting, and that's our job. We got to protect these kids because they're, they're just opening fire everywhere.
Question.
Everywhere.
Question, what year was that?
I was, I came in seven, eight.
No, no, what year was the shooting? It wasn't February 18, 2024?
But we're gonna get Mr. Williams, he gonna come and he gonna show us a film of that, of that, so we, so we can be clear.
Yeah, I don't, the film is accurate, probably. But my question is, what year was it? If it was two years ago, and there has not been an incident on Golf Avenue two years ago?
So he'll be able to tell us, he'll be, when he come up, when he come up, he'll be able to tell us what, what year it was. But, but you understand that, that you'll be able to get to your house. You will be able to get to your house. You will be given a card, and you'll be able to get to your house. Anybody that's coming to your house, baby, we not gonna block you from your house.
Well, I know you're not gonna do that.
No, we not gonna do that.
Mr., go ahead.
On the meetings that have been held, um...
Ms. Murdock, let him talk in, 'cause we got to record you.
On the, on the meetings that I understand that have been held, and we were supposed to be invited to the meetings, and I need to know who is responsible for contacting the persons who are supposed to be present at the meetings?
Okay. Well, we'll ask Claflin when they come up. 'Cause I don't, I don't know who's supposed to be, who's in charge.
Because we have not received any information in regard to the property and the closing.
I know y'all was always invited. I don't know, I mean, y'all was, they was open to it. I don't know whether you got something written or not.
Well, according to the paper, I was sent invitations, and I didn't respond. I was not sent anything, text messages or call. And some of you know my number, so I'm, I'm not hard to find. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Ms. Hannah wanna say?
Okay.
To the Marx.
Yes, sir.
I'm hearing your cry. What is it that you want from the city of Orangeburg to make this work? We know the situation, and we know that Claflin's security will be doing what it is. We know that Orangeburg's security will be doing what it is, also with the help of the county. But what is it that you want? 'Cause I know you want Claflin to grow. We all do. We want the students to be safe, but tell us, what is it that the Murdochs want from us?
What do I want? I want Golf Avenue not to be closed down. Because I'm, see, Golf Avenue is not the plantation. You have the hood, just regular people. When you go to a plantation where all those million-dollar homes are, you drive right through. And there are shootings in all universities, all the time. So what security, what security measures has Claflin put up to present that? It, it did not happen this year. It did not happen last year. I'm willing to bet it happened two years ago. So once in two years is not a big deal. It's a big deal, but, you know, it doesn't call for. It's a big deal, but you know, it doesn't call for closing the street down. Come on now.
I'll get that clue.
Thank you, Mrs. Murdock. You know, at this point in time, we need to be proactive instead of being defensive. It may not, not have happened recently. But at the same token, we have to take measures to make sure that it doesn't happen. And that's what we're trying to do.
I understand that.
My question to you, what will be the negative impact if we close up that section of golf?
The negative, oh.
Ask the question again?
What will be the negative impact to you in your house or your building if we close up that part of golf?
Access to and from.
But we're not going to, we're not going to restrict you from going to your house.
But you have to understand, to rent a home, I will not rent a home in a neighborhood where I have to show an ID card or give my driver's license number every time I go there. Because I'm on golf quite a bit, my husband goes every day, and I'm over there quite a bit. And let me tell you what I saw yesterday morning on Golf Avenue. I saw a student leave, leave the bypass, get up to Clark, and he got to Clark between Clark and the police station below the dormitory, he was speeding. And that wasn't a city person. How do I know? Because he went on campus. You see, you're assuming that all those persons came on, were out of the city that came was doing that shooting. And I don't want to go along, I don't believe that. I never believed that all of a sudden, people coming from, you've been there for years, all of a sudden, people are coming out of the city of Orangeburg to shoot on Claflin University. I don't believe that. I believe a lot of those persons who were out there that night were Claflin University students. Now, you can say what you want to say, but I'm telling you, I'm over there a lot.
But let's assume they are students from Claflin. If we put measures around that environment, that would restrict the speeding. That will also restrict the shooting because the security will be around there to enforce.
Why it's not around there now?
It's, but that's what we're trying to do.
No.
So we're trying to be, you know, proactive. Because if you just leave it open, no security, no measures, then you will have.
You can secure it now. Why can't you secure?
Yes, but they have steps.
Another question. Dr. Warmack says going further down golf? Why would he go further down golf if you're worried about this section? He says ladies going further down golf. There are really a lot of families further down golf. I doubt he gets that, according to the paper. I doubt he'll be able to go further down golf.
We're going to Clark Street.
Now, but the paper stated that he has intention to go beyond Clark Street. But those students speed on golf, and you have speed, you have speed blocks on that street, not up-down. You can hardly speed on golf on that street for some months. It's not smooth traveling. But those students do a lot of speeding on Golf Avenue. I'm over there, I know. A lot of it.
Okay, we gonna, you want to say something?
I was gonna ask the question. Can you get to your house, like, from Clark Street, take a right to go to your house or come off the bypass?
No, no, no.
This the only way you could get to your house is from?
That's the only way, I know, unless you go through on the campus.
Ms. Murdock, you can make a right to get to your house. If you come down Clark Street, you make a right, and you come up to your house.
Oh, yeah, but you're gonna block, that's gonna be blocked off too, though.
Yeah, but you'll be able to get in your house, you would have.
I can, I can, I can get in my, if I have a pass or a password or something like that. I shouldn't have to do that. I'm a citizen, I pay taxes, I shouldn't have to do that. If I rent my home, they're not gonna want to do that. Would you want to do that in a rental home?
I want to be safe.
Well, you'll be safe.
I don't want to be shot.
You won't be shot, Reverend Butler. Come on now.
Well, she will still be able to come in, but she'll have a pass or a card.
Yeah, yeah, she'll be able to come in. We would not respect, you know.
Oh, I know that.
Ms. Murdock.
Yes, ma'am?
Let me just ask, but it's not a question, but if we, when we close that, then the only persons that will be able to come in and out would be those persons with a card. That is like a gated community, which would be much safer.
It depends.
For all of us.
If who they, who they give the card to. Is there gonna be a picture on the card? You know, people, people are people. And if they want to go in the community, all they have to do is give the card to somebody else. You have, besides the name, what you gonna have?
But it would be rather limited to who goes and comes at that time, at a time. Which would, which would be much safer.
Depends on who's coming and going.
For everyone.
Yeah, we finna move on.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Uh, thank you. Chief, we're gonna ask you to come, if you would please. Chief Williams, Claflin University Director of Public Safety.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
Counsel. Good evening. Ms. Evering, and everyone that's here in the audience and at home. I am Melvin Williams. I'm the Director of Public Safety and Emergency Preparedness and Chief of Police with Claflin University. We appreciate the opportunity to come before you again today to share some additional information with you concerning the closure, the request to close Golf Avenue. Before I go into the video, one of the things that, that I do want to address is, is the access issue. And, you know, one thing that will certainly be available is easy access for those individuals who still have property within the confines of the area that will be closed off. And as it stands right now, there are two properties. The one that belonged to the Murdochs and the Glover, the old Glover House, which is vacant at the moment. We have not decided what type of, of mechanism will be in place, but it will be one that would allow individuals, without hesitation, to be able to come up. So there's everything from, you know, from the keypads to the RFID tags, such as what they have at the car wash. You pull up, the gate goes up, you go wash your car for the ones that are prepaid. So we're looking at all of the different options that are available, and we will make a determination on those. As far as the events that have taken place on Golf Avenue that have brought us to this point, we have, again, a very short video, slightly different from the one that we brought before, because this time, we want to show what has taken place from 2021 to 2024, with the last event, the first event happening around August of 2021, and the last one being the one that we spoke about when we were here at the last meeting, which occurred in January of 2024. So if you can run the video, please. So August of 2021. This was a pop-up, what they call a pop-up party. And these, and I'm running through this quick. These are all just, just folks that, that came to Golf Avenue. Now, are they, they're Claflin students out there? Absolutely. But those are not all Claflin students. The car with the wheels, with the lit lights that are lit up are not Claflin students. Those are individuals from the community and other areas that have come in. September 2021, if you look at the young man, he's shooting. That was the first shooting. He shoots, and the next video that you'll see is the individual that he was shooting at in the white, is running behind the silver car. Watch him come over the top. He's firing several rounds back at that young man in the direction of Claflin Hall, and one of the rounds did go into a student's room. September 2022, another pop-up. The cars come down the road, they stop in the middle of the street. Students get out, individuals get out, students are out there, and they dance and take over the road. November of 2023, yet another pop-up. Now, on this one, this car stopped, got out, the music is playing. And what I did was, this was over a twenty-minute period of time, so I tried to do a time lapse by dragging it forward just so that you, you'd have an opportunity to see within a twenty-minute period of time what occurred. So as you will see, the number of individuals continue to grow and grow and grow until it is just an absolute takeover. Those are not all Claflin students. Are Claflin students involved? Yes, they are. But that is not all Claflin students. And then January of 2024, again, a short clip, the car leaving. If you, again, watch, you'll see the muzzle flash out the window of the, the shots being fired from the vehicle. That vehicle leaves the area. And the next photos that you will see is taken from the spot that the shots were fired, our science building, the two white spots on the dark glass. Close-ups are coming, those are bullet holes. So our desire to close Golf Avenue, to better secure the area, is not based on a single incident. It is based on multiple incidents. We believe that by closing Golf Avenue between Clark Street and Magnolia, it would give us an opportunity to be able to control that better, to keep the, the vehicles out that don't need to be there, and for those who should be there. And it's not just the, the residents, but we have to find a way also that if emergency services is responding, that they have the ability to get through without being hindered. If there is a, the need for trash pickup, they, they're able to get through without being hindered. So these are all of the things that, that we will work through. But most certainly, most certainly, what we want to do is, is to make sure that our community is safe and that our community neighbors are not inconvenienced. With the council's approval and the mayor's approval, we have a couple of students that would like to tell you what they think about it. May I call them forward?
Sure.
Okay.
Y'all, for the record, y'all state your name and tell them what school you, you attend. Okay, where you from?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Cheyenne Chambers. I currently am a junior at Claflin University. I study Mass Communications with a concentration in Public Relations.
Hello, I'm Promis Joseph. I'm a sophomore Mass Communications major with a minor in Criminal Justice, and I currently serve as the SGA Treasurer.
Good evening, I am Miles Anthony Johnson, a sophomore middle-level education major from Atlanta, Georgia, and I currently serve as the sophomore class president.
So esteemed members of the City Council, while I hold the position of Treasurer by virtue of the student election, I view myself as a member of the Student Government Association entrusted with the responsibility to tackle the daily challenges faced by students and advocate for their interest on a broader platform. I come before you today to urgently address the dire situation our local college campus is facing due to the unrestricted access provided by Golf Avenue being public. The repercussions of this situation have escalated to alarming levels with incidents of car break-ins, gunfire, and unauthorized individuals entering our campus premises, posing a significant threat to our safety and well-being of our students, faculty, and staff. Might I add that on January eighteenth, 2024, a shooting on Golf Avenue did take place, which, of course, the video was played on February twentieth, 2024, at the previous city council meeting and today, which the bullets went into the science building, where students do take classes every single day. However, this is larger than saying it's not a big deal because I think the safety of our future scholars is what's at stake.
The current state of Golf Street has become a magnet for criminal activities that are endangering the entire community. Our college campus, meant to be a sanctuary for learning and growth, has been compromised. And the fear and insecurity among our students are palpable. We implore the City Council to take immediate and decisive action to address this crisis. Measures such as an increased police presence, enhanced security measures, and exploring options to restrict access to the street during certain hours must be urgently considered and implemented. Now, we know that nothing is a one-hundred percent guarantee for safety, but what we can do is add more safety measures. There are plenty of gated communities around the country, and people prefer to live there because of the security it provides.
Lastly, the safety of our college campus and the surrounding community should be paramount. And we urge the council to prioritize this matter with the utmost urgency. We stand ready to collaborate with you guys to work together to find a viable solution that ensures the safety not only of the students, but of the residents that are around here and the stakeholders involved. Thank you for your attention in this pressing issue, and we look forward to your swift and decisive action in addressing this critical issue.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor and Counsel, and I would make myself available if there are any questions.
Any question?
No, just one question. Now, when a meeting's being called with, with the residents and what have you, we want everyone to know about the meeting. So please be sure, to make sure that they know before time for the meeting and where the, the meeting will be held.
Yes, ma'am.
We do ask that.
We will make sure of that.
Mr. Mayor, and the members of the council, one thing that you mentioned is the assets, which I'm glad, you know, you mentioned that assets. And I feel for Mrs. Murdock, especially your daughter that lives around that area. I feel for her safety, that she needs to be safe where she lives. You know, and if there is an easement whereby your daughter can come in and go, you know, goes out, that would be real fine. Because, and that's what Mr. Williams had just said. There should be an easement. And your daughter is not going to be restricted, but she's going to be safe. That's very important. Your daughter will be safe, and then the students will be safe. Because that's why I said we need to be proactive instead of being defensive in what we do. Because most of the students came from far and near. We want them to graduate from Claflin and go back home or maybe to grad school or whatever it may be. Safe. Not coming over here and paying the ultimate price. We want them to be safe. And one other thing, too, we have a representative in your district that she needs to be engaged. She needs to be informed of what is going on in her district.
Yes, sir.
So that, that's why we have representatives in different districts. So nothing should be done without letting your representative know if there's any problem around that area. Yes, ma'am, you know.
Yes, sir.
We want to thank y'all for coming before us because I just want to say this as the mayor. Safety is very important, and we don't want nobody to pay the ultimate sacrifice. I came here from Atlanta, Georgia. Your parents send you there, they don't want to take you back home in a box. And that's the, and it's happening all across the country. I want to just express this. I work in a high school, and, you know, going in there every morning, you don't know what we're gonna expect. We have, we've had a gun in there. One of my, had gun up under his, up under his coat. And he, he was one of mine that I, I mentored, and I just, I have not to be there that day. But he could have very well shot us. But by the time we got the sheriff department down there, it was some scuffling and fighting and bumping in there that I've never heard. And it's, and I'm gonna retire this year, June the sixth. I'm getting out of there. It's dangerous. It's too dangerous. You don't know what's in the mind of these students. So I'm getting out of June the sixth. That don't mean I'm, I won't get hurt, but I'm getting out of there because it's too much for me. And I just don't want nobody, I don't want to see nobody get hurt. Nobody, nobody anymore. Thank y'all so much. Our old business.
Somebody else.
Sixty Williams. Sixty Williams.
We, we, we gotta stay with our agenda right now. Our old business number two. Okay, okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel.
Good evening.
Item number two for Counsel's consideration
Item number two for council's consideration is second reading of an ordinance accepting a portion of Golf Avenue from Clark Street to Magnolia Street from the South Carolina Department of Transportation, allowing Cloughland University to close that portion of the street, but first transferring the road to Cloughland University. One thing that I failed to mention at the last meeting that I wanted to make sure that is understood by you and the public is that any right-of-ways or easements that are currently, that the public utilities or any utility provider has will stay in place if that, if you all approve the transfer to Cloughland. So we just wanted to make sure that everyone understands that. And there was also a slight revision to the ordinance to formally accept the transfer of the road from DOT to the city. That was done via a letter back in twenty twenty-two, but we just want to formalize that with this ordinance as well. But those are the only two changes that I wanted to point out.
Everybody clear on that? Okay, and we're gonna ask you to read your?
Mayor, if I may, pursuant to the matter related to the closing of Golf Avenue from Clark Street to Magnolia Street and the transfer of said property to Cloughland University, I wish to recuse myself from discussions and voting due to a potential conflict of interest based on my position as an elected official and being an employee of Cloughland University. Therefore, I recuse myself from item number two, the second reading of an ordinance closing Golf Avenue from Clark Street to Magnolia Street and transferring such road to Cloughland University as documented on this agenda, March fifth, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you. I'll, any more discussion before I read this? Second reading of an ordinance accepting portion of Golf Avenue from Clark Street to Magnolia Street from the South Carolina Department of Transportation, closing Golf Avenue from Clark Street to Magnolia, transferring such roads to Cloughland University, and providing for related matter. We need to entertain a motion, please.
Mayor and Council, I move the acceptance of closing Golf Avenue from Clark Street to Magnolia Street.
Motion's been made by Councilman Kit.
Second motion.
Second by Councilman Clu, all in favor? Any opposed? As have the motion is carried. Thank you. Item number three?
Certainly, Mayor and Council. Item number three is a resolution to appoint two persons to the Twenty Twenty-Fourth Capital Project Sales and Use Tax Commission. For your information, the county is considering the fifth iteration of the Capital Project Sales Tax Penny. There's a six-person commission that is to meet and come up with the list of capital project items for consideration by the voters in the November referendum. The city of Orangeburg is statutorily required to appoint two members to that commission. We had previously asked for your appointees, and based on the names given to our clerk, to council, you have decided to appoint myself and Josh Nixon from the Department of Public Utilities.
Okay. Do we have, do we have a?
The majority.
Yeah, we have majority. Do we need, we need a motion? Or just, do we need a motion? We do, okay, okay.
Mr. Mayor?
You need to read the resolution?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, check the statistics again on the names.
Well, we had, he got them right there. Josh Nixon got the most recommendation.
Not the one we have here? Not the one we have here?
No, not the one they have here.
Let us look first before y'all.
Well, that, I just wanted to say that was a council person called and changed their.
Changed their thoughts. So he has, Josh got the most, and then it was Josh, then City Administrator. Because one council person changed their mind.
So who, where do we cross?
One changed their mind.
Since this was written?
Yes.
Yes, 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 ma'am.
Well, then that should have been given to us.
Been reflected here.
Yeah, because see what?
But we already had given you all, don't jump down on him. We already had given you all the package, and the lady called this today and changed her mind.
It just happened today.
So don't jump down. No, he didn't, no, no, don't jump down. She called it, changed her mind. So he wrote it down there showing that Josh got the most.
It just?
Oh, okay.
Y'all apologize to him and don't upset him. All right.
So it'll be Josh and?
And Sidney.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, okay.
So I'm gonna read the resolution. You ready for me to read?
I just have one question. What was the question? Oh, has Josh been contacted?
We have.
Has he agreed?
We have contacted Josh.
Oh, okay, okay. I just thought I'd ask, you know, just to want him to get blindsided.
Josh is a trained CPA.
But I just wanted to make sure he's not blindsided.
Yeah, no, no, no.
Yeah, that's it.
Y'all ready for me to read the resolution? Did I read it now?
Yes, by all means.
A resolution to appoint persons to the Twenty Twenty-Four Capital Project Sales and use tax commissions and to provide for related matters. I need to entertain a motion.
Based on the amendments for the statistics in terms of voting, I moved up, you know, to pass the resolution.
Okay, motion's been made by Councilman Clu, second by Councilman Kit, all in favor? Any opposed? As have the motion is carried. Thank you, Mr. Everett.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Council.
If our students could remain and we could talk to y'all?
Can they remain for?
Can y'all remain and we can be talking to y'all after? Please. If y'all don't have no homework to do and the research. We have, we have item number four. Ms. Everett's gonna talk to us about discussions of vape shops ordinance. So we want to hear the discussion, and then we'll come back together and give him our view on it. But we don't have time to do it out here, but we got to come back and give him our view as he discuss, if you will.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor and Council. As some of you know, you have asked or asked for us to consider drafting the ordinance to address vape shops in the location within the city. We are, when I say we, I mean the city attorney, Michael Slarick and myself, are actually looking for more guidance from you all in terms of what you would like to see in that ordinance. There are obviously a number of ways that it can go, and there have been other local governments who have instituted similar ordinances. But before we ask the city attorney to draft the ordinance, we just wanted to get more guidance from you all. So I'll ask Michael if he can just to kind of give you a highlight of some of the items that are found in similar ordinances in different local governments.
Can you come to the podium? Because we need to get.
Good evening. There are any number of ways that whether it's a vape shop or any other type of establishment that the county or the city would like to attempt to zone in particular areas, whether that's an overlay district, whether that's central business district. And again, I don't want to necessarily just focus on the vape shop, although I know that is a particular interest of council at the moment. But when looking at any sort of land use regulations, there are a number of ways of trying to address what it is that council is really concerned about. Is it, again, a particular area of the city? Is it particular adjoining uses of properties? For example, when you look at the state regulations dealing with alcohol sales, places of worship, places of education are of particular concern at the state level. Are those the types of concerns, for example, that council is trying to address here? Or is there some other reason why council is trying to focus on, again, whatever the particular use is? Understanding that helps start the process of trying to address it. City and I have had a number of conversations, and certainly I can craft an ordinance that I think might address what council's looking at, but without more, it literally is my thoughts, not council's thoughts. And my concern is I can present something that would be legally sufficient but may not be the policy intent that council is trying to aim for. And so rather than bluntly waste your time by bringing in an ordinance and you look at it and go, "That's a very lovely ordinance, but doesn't do anything like what we're looking for." It seemed as though perhaps asking for some individual feedback, I'm not necessarily suggesting, although that of course is up to council, that this turn into a workshop on rezoning or zoning, but perhaps individual conversations with either me or with the city administrator, more specificity about what council is looking for, then we can try to bring something back, even if initially it's sort of bullet points, making sure council's comfortable with that, and then bringing forward a full-blown ordinance that council could consider.
I do agree. I think that we need to give you directions, this council, of what we want to do as related to vape shops coming up. We haven't given, but we do need to discuss it among ourselves, maybe on the next executive session, and so we can find out what is it. We need to hear the voices and minds of this council. The vape, there are citizens in this area that are concerned about on every corner, you got a vape shop. And they're very concerned. I've gotten concerns about it even this week. Uh huh, so I think we need to come together. What y'all think?
I think we need to do that. Just want to remind us that, I don't know whether it was last year, when they first start popping up, we talked about it, but then it passed on. But the first one was over by South Carolina State, and there are one or two over there, and they are so close to South Carolina State and Cloughland University. And we were concerned, and now they're popping up everywhere. And it's just too much, too much.
And to that point, and I will give an example that may seem silly, but this is part of the reason why I'm looking for some additional direction and trying to determine if it's a particular use, if it's adjacent uses that are the concern or some other location in a particular area of the city. There are cities, for an example, who have a central business district or a downtown district. And within that district, they may only permit one car wash, for example. And I realize we're not talking about car washes necessarily, but for the similar reason, they are concerned that they do not want a gas station or a car wash on every corner in their central business district. They want it to be walking retail. They have made great strides in widening sidewalks. And so they don't want to see cars pulling in and out, large trucks pulling in and out of a gas station or a car wash on every single corner. Some people may suggest that perhaps coffee shops, I won't name any in particular, but they have green sirens on their cups. If you go in some large cities, you may have four of them on the four corners of an intersection. Absolutely. A Chicago, New Yorker, the two that jumped to mind, LA is probably the same way. And so whether it is vape shops or other types of smoking establishments, whether that's liquor stores, whatever it is that the council is interested in trying to address, again, depending on where in the city, may be a different answer for council than other areas of the city. And in some places, it may be that it is uniformly applied, in other places, it may be more restrictive or less restrictive, depending on where those are located, and that's more of the feedback. Because again, I can craft something that I believe is legal, but it may not meet the policy considerations that council is trying to address.
Well, let us, let us discuss it and give you some direction.
Of course.
Thank you, please. Thank you. Matters pertaining to Department of Public Utilities.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, good evening.
Good evening.
Item number five is a resolution recognizing Water Professionals Day. As you know, the DPU employs water professionals in both their water treatment facilities as well as outside staff, our wastewater treatment facilities, again, both inside the plant and outside. These people are the ones that keep our water safe to drink. They're the ones that keep our businesses operating and then keeping our environment safe and protected for use throughout our community. So we want to take this opportunity along with the state of South Carolina and many across the state and across the country to recognize Water Professionals Day. These are very highly-trained employees who do a very, very important job for the community that we, that we live in.
Thank you, Warren, for giving us that update. Before I read this resolution, are there any discussions? Okay. If not, a resolution recognizing Water Professionals Day. We'd like to entertain a motion.
Move for passage?
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Kit, second by Councilman Clu, all in favor? Any opposed? As have the motion is carried.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number six, Ms. Lynch will take care of that.
Okay. Ms. Lynch, state your name and your position, please.
Cheryl Lynch, I'm the Director of Human Resources at the Department of Public Utilities. Mayor and City Councils, thank y'all for this evening and for your consideration to the recommendations and appointment changes to the Department of Public Utilities Grievance Committee. Before you, you have those recommendations. We had several members of the grievance committee. As you know, those members, we have five active members at all times, and they serve as a, on a three-year term. We had several individuals. Their term expires at the end of March, twenty twenty-four, which includes Ms., Mr. Erskine Carter and Mr. Jerome Stokes. And we recommend the reappointment of Ms. Brittany Sloan from our electric division and Mr. Willie White with our water division. We also had Mr. Delvin Davis, who served in an interim role last year for just a few months. His term would have expired. He picked up an old term and filled in for an individual, and his term would end in March, and we asked that we extend him to a full-time active member and let him complete his three-year term, which would end in March of twenty twenty-seven. And then we had one individual, Ms. Beverly Thomas, who left employment with the Department of Public Utilities, and we are recommending the replacement of Mr. Mike Miller in our electric division. So you have those appointments. They're in front of you. Be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions or concerns from the council regarding the grievance committee? All right, we gonna make a motion, except all of them at one time. All right, who's gonna make the?
I'll make a motion. Do we accept?
Most have been? Most have been made by Councilman Stroman.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kit, all in favor? Any opposed? As have the motion is carried. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, item number seven is the item that we discussed on last council meeting and executive session, fees related to the account of the town of Norway of seventeen thousand, seven hundred, seventy-seven dollars. I ask that you grant me authority to negotiate the waiver of those fees that are associated with the town of Norway's account.
Okay, we would like to entertain a motion if no discussion regarding these, item number seven.
Make a motion. Do we accept Mr. Paul's recommendation?
A motion has been made by Councilman Stroman.
Second.
Second by Councilman Knott, all in favor? Any opposed? As have the motion is carried. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
We want to recognize our, the young lady from Delph Zeta, Phi Beta, we want to recognize you. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mayor and Council members. My name is Yvonne Hanson. I have the pleasure of being in your presence today, representing the local chapter, Alpha, Almacron, Zeta, or Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated. In the absence of my president, Connie Porte, what we bring is we bring greetings, and we also, too, ask for your, for your, for your attendance to our first annual chili cook-off, which we're, which we're gonna be having it in connection with the Dora Foundation, which is actually who we're partnering with, with our Zeta Male Network. And that cook-off is gonna be on March the sixteenth at the Pavilion. So we're asking for your attendance, if possible, and also to invite others to the community. This is a community event, so we hope that everyone is there. It's gonna be exciting. It's the first of many to come in the future. So we hope that uh everyone is there. Uh, it's gonna be exciting. It's the first of many to come in the future, uh, as well as it's also to, it's gonna to also invite the other Divine Eye organizations as well, as there will be, uh, there will be a a cook-off as well as a stroll of each of the sororities and fraternities.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for the time.
Have a good evening. Oh, you too. And we want to acknowledge Mr. Cecil Williams and Ms. Barbara Williams. We always happy to see them. They support us greatly, and we thank y'all so much, and all of you. We just want to, Ms. Candice, uh, we always enjoy you coming, amen, and to be with us and all of you and the students and all of you. Thank y'all so much. We're gonna have executive session, and in executive session, we're gonna discuss performance evaluation City of Orangeburg Administrator, South Carolina Code thirty-four seventy A one. And on that note, I would like to entertain a motion to go in executive session.
Make a motion. We go in second session.
Motion's been made by Councilman Stroman.
Second.
Second by Councilman Agriivis. All in favor?
Aye.
I say the motion is carried. Now, we want the Council to remain, please. We got some papers to sign before we go in the back. Thank you. And good night. And we want our students to come up, and Mr. Garrett.